Okay, so school committee is just now returning from its executive session. And so I will call to order our open session. That's where it's at from our meeting, but you're resuming at seven fifty or five, five fifty. So I will read through our agenda for today. We had an executive session and then we moved to our next agenda item is Lynch Elementary School replacement project update, followed by next meetings, followed by adjournment. And we will begin with our single agenda item. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Jay Nardone from EFPPC and Mr. Charlie Hay from TAFE Architects. Over the past few months, the Lynch School Working Group has been working very hard. Yes, please join us.
And if everyone could speak loudly, use your best outside recess voice, that would be helpful. Where, where mic impaired, they're not. You should all shout, just get it out.
Thank you, Mr. Hay. So over the past few months, the school, the Lynch School Working Group has been working very hard to support some milestones with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, that are normally about six months apart. And in this case, in order to hold our place in the tightly organized and structured MSBA schedule of projects and to meet the target of the reopening of the Lynch School in fall 2025, Dr. Hackett, the EFPPC, TAFE, Hill, and the other members have been working to support these milestones in a very compressed one and a half month timeframe. So today we will hear an update on the Lynch Elementary School feasibility study that town meeting had approved and all, and the schematic design as well as some information on space space. So Mr. Nixon or Dr. Hackett, before we get started, do you have any further introductory comment?
I wasn't expecting to make any introductory comments, but I would say TAFE is working awfully hard, as you said, under a very compressed time schedule. And I think Jay's doing a great job as chair because it's a big committee. And on top of Lynch, we've got high school stuff going on. For those who watch, we were talking about stormwater management this week. We've got roof issues, et cetera, at the high school. And Jay runs these meetings with a smile.
But the money's good, Jay, right?
So I think what we were looking, actually, the last time you guys were here was to present the space summer, right? So a lot has happened since they were here. And there's frankly, a lot of good news to report as it pertains to our engagement with the MSBA. So it's a general update where we are on schedule, the preferred option, what was the reaction to the PDP? Charlie or Jay may want to say a few words about what's the PSR, that and then, and then really a lot of work has been done trying to figure out, okay, so do we need swing space, yes or no? The answer is yes, then how much? And so there's an answer for that, at least a minimum, two grade loads. And then where do they go? What are those options? So we'll talk about that tonight. How does that, what's that cost? And you know, how might it be paid for, et cetera? So the EFPPC has been coming up with a couple of options that's truly an opportunity to discuss tonight, really for the first time because Charlie was just getting some cost information basically yesterday. So that's kind of coming into focus. So with that, do you want to add something?
Oh, I think we're eager to hear. Yes. That is likely the possible plan. We're, we're, we're audio impaired with our mics. So you know, we're, so maybe when you speak as loudly as they can, and hopefully they'll get to pick up. But I'm also recording it on Zoom so we can post it too. I'm getting reports from Dave, I'm sorry, that there's, they're, they're picking up some audio, so. Speak loudly.
As they say, they'll clean it up and post.
They'll clean it up and post.
Shall I start? Good evening, thank you for having us here this evening. Yes, we're sent here to give you an overview of the process, where we are, how we come to what is now the preferred option, which is a replacement option proposed, and then what the issues are around accommodating construction onsite, well, calming the school onsite during construction. And then finally, what those things might cost and what the timeline is. So I'm going to go fast and there's going to be a lot, unless you want me to click, there's going to be a lot of next slide. So forgive me for that, but anyway, let's get started. We, you want to just go?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
Do you want to go, go?
Yeah, yeah. So, so let's, no, oh, no, let's go back, I'm sorry. Let me talk for a minute about, I didn't realize you could ask the slide, go back one. So, right, so process wise, we were in the preliminary design program when we talked to you about space templates. And you voted on a space template. And the good news that Chris was referencing is that the MSBA generally had no objections to the proposed space template that was submitted. So that's very positive. They had comments around the edges, but nothing of significance. So the number of classrooms is as proposed. This generally, the list of spaces is as proposed, so that's encouraging.
Including, including the enlarged preschool.
Right.
So that means, so we're seven classrooms.
So, so all of that is very positive. They obviously always remind every district of what they contribute towards and what they don't contribute towards in terms of reimbursement. That's, that's absolute standard practice for them. And so, but that preliminary design program was really an existing conditions analysis essentially. We then proceeded into the preferred schematic report, which is what we're just finishing with, and it is not entirely finished. But that has been submitted to the MSBA. We have not received their comments back. There's a significant milestone coming, which is called the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee Meeting, and they will have an opportunity then to comment. So we are to some degree paused in terms of proceeding with the, with the development of the preferred option. However, the significant aspect of the PSR, of course, is that is really when the district selects the preferred option. And the preferred option here is a replacement elementary school on the Lynch site. It was called N5 when there were nine options. It's now called the preferred option, and so it will be called the proposed Lynch Elementary School. So that's where we are, you'll see pictures of that in a minute. Once we have the MSBA's approval, they will go actually have a formal board meeting after the FAS meeting. They will vote to allow you to advance into schematic design. We will, over the course of the summer, be proceeding with schematic design. The goal of schematic design, of course, is to really get into the details of the project and really, in, in terms of, I think, for your benefit and for the, and in the view of the MSBA, developing a really accurate, solid cost estimate. Because that, that's going to form the, the project funding agreement you have with the MSBA ultimately, the town has, the district has. And that's what you would go for, for a vote on with the voters Winchester, and that would happen in the fall. The schematic design will be complete by the end of August. The board meeting is in October. That will approve the, the project funding agreement, and then you will proceed with local action around voting. So that's the process, and that's where we are in the process. But it's all been very encouraging so far. The MSBA has had no big concerns. We seem to be on track with them. There are very few comments back in the, in the, in the initial PDP phase, and we'll see what we get back in the PSR phase. All right, now, next slide, sorry, I skipped that slide. So the preferred option, N5, here's the site plan, the white building there, you see that proposed building? That's the proposed building. It's partially on water department property, it's partially on the existing Lynch School. We're going to talk in a little bit more detail about how this all works in a minute. But the great thing about the proposed building is it really opens up a lot of site. A, for roadways and parking, which you desperately need to solve issues there around pickup and drop off and adequate parking. It gives a lot more outdoor play area for students, both, both active play and outdoor learning. It allows us to connect to the wonderful sort of wooded hill to the south, which right now is behind the building. But now is the building is going to face, we can create connections to that. And significantly, it really opens up the soccer fields to the north to the school. So suddenly, the school is really looking out at this soccer field. So it really creates a unified site, which is pretty exciting and should be very effective. And I think it will certainly improve. And there are lots of opportunities for developing this site into a really lovely school campus.
And quickly interject, Charlie, so for those who don't know, the Select Board unanimously approved placing an article on the spring warrant to transfer the Wellfield parcel to the district, which was necessary because the MSBA will accept this PSR. The board will not vote on a project that sits on land, it's not under the control of the district. And at the EFPPC meeting this week, we actually authorized some initial funding towards formal decommissioning of the wells, and that would be a project expense, so we've authorized that for the H.
Next slide. So this is just a larger scale version of that site plan. And the reason I put it up here is it sort of shows how, the, the blue dots are kind of how, how pedestrians could move around the site. You can see those connections. But it also significantly, because we're going to talk about it further, shows the existing Lynch School here, right? So you can see the proximity of the proposed building to the existing building next. Here's the first floor plan, and I'm not going to go into it in great detail at the moment. But what's significant here is that, yeah, those yellow boxes on the far right are pre-K. So pre-K gets a dedicated entrance, a dedicated controlled entrance at the end of the building. It has the opportunity to have different ways out for play and for outdoor learning. Kindergarten is also on the first floor. And then, of course, administration, as it almost always is, is on the first floor with a, with a main entrance. And then the lobby, the main lobby, which is to the left here, connects the cafeteria and the gymnasium. And that could potentially be zoned off for community use in the evenings and the weekends, which was one of the kind of goals of the project. And right up, if you go to the second floor, right upstairs on the, on the far left is art and media. They also could be part of that zoned off area. So you could walk in as a community member to the main entrance, go up a, go up an open stair in the lobby and arrive at either art or media, and those could get used as well for community purposes. So that's a pretty nifty way of organizing the building. Second floor will have grades one, two, and three. First grade is kind of being treated as its own little academy. And then, and then two and three are grouped together. They have extended learning zones outside the classrooms. And this, of course, all is subject to considerably more development. And we're going to have much more in-depth conversations with, with, particularly with Frank and his team and his, and his staff over exactly how this thing should get laid out and be organized. So this was, this was what we needed to do to get to this submission, but there's a long way to go. And that's what schematic design is all about. And then the top floor has grades four and five. Grade five has the opportunity potentially to have a little bit of an outdoor space on the roof, which could be kind of great, south facing. And that is that sort of transition year as they prepare for middle school. So that could be a really neat kind of end to your experience at the Lynch School. Also on the top floor is the STEM lab, which will be probably utilized by most students, but most, I would presume, most intensively by the oldest students. So that's how the plan is organized. And if, and now we have a couple of images that are sort of conceptual from the air of what the building, you know, at the most, most cardboard box look to at the moment. But you know, sitting on the side, you can see the parking, you can see the roadways and the parking below. You can see that we continue to have the entrance from the east and the entrance from the west. And potentially, they don't necessarily connect unless the town and the district wants them to connect. I mean, they have to be able to connect for public safety. But the fact of the matter is, you can continue to have the two neighborhood entrances, both for students, pedestrians, bikers, and cars. The presumption is the buses would, the limited number of buses you have would take them and drop off on the west side. But there are two different pickup, drop off loops. There's two different parking areas that kind of split the number of cars essentially evenly. And there's this big swath of area in the middle that, as I told the building committee, is, I think, sort of three quarters of the size of a football field. So it's a pretty big space for outdoor play and outdoor learning. And then, of course, on the north side, that's the next image, there's also opportunities for outdoor learning areas as well as this connection, direct connection to the soccer field. So it can be used for recess, it can be used for PE, which we think is a real benefit to the site. So that, those are kind of the, that's kind of the proposed concept plan right now. And obviously, it has an awfully long way to go, but that's where we're at with, with N5. So we keep going, we get to the issue of phasing and swing space. So here's our site. And that white box you just saw, to be built at a bare minimum, probably needs that orange box around it. And you're all familiar with this site, so you can see what happens to the site when we draw this orange box around where the building would be built. We lose the eastern pickup and drop off loop. We lose the entirety of the parking lot. And we just barely managed to keep the western pickup and drop off loop. So it is, it, it, it creates a challenging situation for, for kind of operating the Lynch during construction. So if we go to the next slide, you can see where the majority of your parking is. There are about ninety spaces out there. District's guessing you need sort of say eighty operationally, seventy maybe. So if we take all of that, that orange box, we take this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and this, the remaining count is about thirty-five spaces. So the day that that orange fence got put up, we'd have thirty-five spaces on site. So keep that in mind as we move along. So the premise is that if we, is how do we do, how do we keep that, that orange box? How do we run the school with that, that circumstance? So the, the premise is, okay, let's take down the end of the Lynch School as a first phase of construction, as a phased project. We've done many, many phased projects, many schools are done phased, your high school was done as a phased project, I believe. We take down the end of the building in order to create a temporary parking lot to get our parking count back up above thirty-five spaces. We created a temporary pickup and drop off loop, it's not the size, not size for a bus, size for an SUV, but not a bus. Parents could theoretically come, queue, come back, come and leave. And we maintain the loop we have to the east. But the contractor is taking over the whole rest of the site. So that's why the plan, the approach is to take a piece of the building off. And it really is in order to allow there to be some parking there during the course of construction.
I have a question about by that end instead of the gymnasium? Because the cafeteria sits in the middle of that building, the gymnasium sits at the far end near the turnaround, and not the Lynch or the Cafeteria Torium for a couple of years, as some of our other schools have. And that would be right next to your loop.
So one of the biggest concerns is the boiler rooms right there. So you would be taking your whole. Uh, no, it's not underground, it's.
It's in that, it's in that.
It's great access, yeah. So you'd be losing your boiler room. And of course, we always keep in mind when we're talking about taking these buildings down. And you would, you would have no ability to send, you have very limited ability to park and descend. But yes, you could conceivably do it if you could find a way to maintain the boiler room. The question would be how much parking could they go?
I just looked at it, Jason's bed, there's sixteen.
So the next slide shows then the building under construction, so that white box.
Can Tom ask a quick question?
Oh, sure.
Sorry, just before you get into the building stuff back, you have a provision for replacing the playground space?
We haven't talked about that. We haven't talked about what the district is going to need in terms of playground and how precisely to accommodate that.
Thank you, Tom, I was going to say.
Well, so there is some, we're not taking the entire playground, so some of that can be maintained as play. It's just, but it's, but it's going to be, half of it is going to be gone theoretically.
Will they still have, it looks like, will the path to the fields, will the students?
So we were proposing a path to the field to the east now. So there is an old roadway there, abandoned roadway, and that could be developed into an access, site access. So if you were, if you did have parking down here, you could actually park and go over the field that way. But no one's going to be able to go from the west.
But you are not going to need that real construction?
The theory here was that contractors with the construction entrance would be as far to the west as we could make it, and they would have an immediate entrance, gated entrance, right when you come in. So that there will be very little of the access roads being shared. Contractors would get on site this way, this would be lay down, this, this future parking area would be during construction, would be lay down and parking could contract as with sort of the section around the bar of the building. But yeah, we need to talk about the play area and what we have to have and not have. So, so the more of the building we can remove, the better off we are, because it may allow us to do both some parking and some play. And we do think we can have a safe pedestrian route across the face of the building. So that's, that's our, that's our sort of building constructions scenario. And then the final scenario, of course, is you have a brand new building, you're opening it, it's great. However, you haven't torn the old building down and you haven't done the final site work. So the third phase, which is usually the fall after the building opens, the summer and fall after the building opens, is to tear that and abate, because it's got asbestos in it. Asbestos abatement plus demolition plus site work of all those roadways and parking lots you saw in the rendering have to occur. So you were having, actually, you still have for a while, two buildings on site. You just have one that's coming down, one that's occupied. So in that case, we're doing the same exercise. We're using the, the bus loop that we already have been using. We're using the bus, temporary bus loop, the car loop we've already been using. We're now using the brand new parking lot next to the building. And we're giving the contractor the southern section of the site and having them enter off this brand, off of Brandon Wood Road, and then be entering into the service area, which would then be part of the construction closure. So that's sort of the, the scenario. But the point of showing this to you is to make the point that we do have a potential issue where we kind of need some swing space. And that's, you know, next slide.
Just before you, that's like, the, the eighty spaces aren't represented on that slide. I know that's just during the summertime, but it's thirty-five new spaces.
So we're saying that, we're saying that during this phase, which would be the fall essentially, the fall of 2025. So we're assuming this stage that a minimum is going to go from, I mean, the phase, this, this, at a minimum, this that goes from June to November of 2025, and when the building is opening, the fall of twenty-five. During that period, this parking is going to be, spaces down at the end that have always been there, which are nineteen right now, plus the brand new parking lot over here, and that gets us close to fifty spaces. So we're still short on spaces. But, but I mean, we still don't have the eighty spaces the district would like, or over a hundred, which is proposed as the final condition. But there is no, so there may be also be, have to be conversations about how parking being somewhat limited. So if we move on to the next slide.
Can I just ask one quick question? So if there were no students on site, that timeframe would, would change or not in terms of?
Timeframe would condense.
Okay, so.
So we'd have no.
Fall of twenty-five, it would, the site would be completely done.
It would be, they would say, it's open, here it is, it's, it's September of twenty-five, here's your building, here's your site, you're all done. Because they could be doing these, these, these two operations, construction of a new building and demolition of a building, would be happening concurrently with one another during the course of two years. And also, we cut off time at the beginning, because we wouldn't be doing an early enabling phase. We'd just be starting and going and finishing. So there's no question, you'd cut, you know, four, five, six months off of the project, both in terms of duration and in terms of some benefit to cost. But that entails getting all students off site.
There's also a question.
Oh, I was just going to ask, is this phase, is the phase three, assume, or with the phase three, is that, is the new building already open?
Yes.
In the fall?
Yes.
So this is just taking place.
Yes, it's, it's, so it's complicated, because you have this brand new building, everybody's very excited about a brand new building. However, it remains a phased, a phased project.
It also could go into twenty-six.
Correct.
Spring of twenty-six.
That is correct.
Into the winter.
Yeah, so if they're, if they fall, and we've had many, this is, this is such a, really is a standard playbook for public schools. And we've had as many projects, we always say you need to be done before snow flies in the fall. And some contractors make it and some don't. If they don't, you see them again in the spring, they're doing a final, final paving, or they're planting the trees and planting, spreading the grass. It just depends. So the conversation, so, so if limited parking on site is a concern, and I've, you know, it's not, that's not, this, the needing phase and needing swing space is not the designer's decision ultimately. What we're trying to do is come up with scenarios that, that kind of tries best we can to address challenges that we see. And certainly, we believe that having not enough parking on site. We've had a project or two where there's a place to put parking, it was like across the street, it was a miracle, but that does not seem to be the case here. So if, if the premise is that thirty-five spaces is inadequate, and if the premise is it's going to be a really tight site and it would benefit from less students on campus anyway, both because of limited play, because of trying to reduce the number of cars, because they're trying to have less teachers on site, then exploring swing space seems to make a whole lot of sense. So when we've done that, certainly seems to be that the only possible location is this building we're in. So that's where we get to the idea of the parkers. And so that's where we've talked about the kind of options for, for swing space. And it is, it appears that there's the re, two reasonable strategies, option A and option B, for getting two to three grades off the Lynch site and onto this site. Obviously, the existing building, as you have it now, could possibly accommodate three grades. Certainly easily could accommodate two grades.
On the upper level.
On the upper level and the modulators, not, not the lower level, Greg. We've, none, none of the, none of the scenarios yet have presumed anything was changing on the lower level. And I guess that could be in play, but that hasn't been anything we've talked about. So if we took that really large classroom to the upper left and made it into two classrooms, there is the possibility of getting three grades here. And I think easily, we could accommodate two grades. So there are two options, there's an option A and an option B. And the preferred option, that, that's option A, that's on the left, assumes that we would relocate district administration somewhere else and that we would then be able to, to accommodate two to three grades in the building. The second scenario, option B, assumes we're, we're leasing eight modular classrooms at a significant cost and placing them on top of the playground and placing them on top of part of the existing parking lot. So if we go to the next slide, sorry, you see the, what we would need to do if we did option B, which is the the modular project. The fact of the matter is, we, almost inevitably, unless we had a project so close to the parkers, that no view here, no access, we're going to disrupt the existing park, the play, play area that's out there. So we're presuming you have to relocate the play structure. Unless, if the feeling was it was adequate parking spaces with a very limited number of spaces, we assume we need supplemental parking. So you'd be constructing parking in the upper softball field temporarily for two years. And of course, you'd be leasing modular classrooms for two years that you would then, that would then be removed. So the presumption here is all of this sort of infrastructure is put in, but then it's all taken out again at the end, because there's no real reason to keep any of it. Because if you kept the parking. Because if you kept the parking lot, you lose the play field, if you kept reduced parking lot of less parking. Don't want those modulators, definitely. And I guess playground, go either way. So the goal here was to come up with sort of this area that showed that whole, what would happen if we had modules on site. And again, if district administration is not in this building, then this building is simply available, it'll be limited work that needs to happen to make it ready for kids again. But it is effectively a school and it could effectively be deployed as a school if district administration wasn't in the building, obviously. So the the kind of upgrades around this would be much more, I mean, we need whiteboards, we need some paint, we need some, you know, technology. But it would be a lot less of the F, less of a lift than doing something like this that that shows you what we have to squeeze on at this site. As I said, in this case, truly limited to two grades, no possibility of three grades. The existing parkers, if we can possibly get three grades in. We do the monitors, probably only getting two grades. Because if we had to get another set of classrooms we have here, it's truly a bucket of. So we move on.
This might be a question about. So is there an option C? Can you give both A and B and pick all of them? Or at least one through five of them?
I was just doing the math on it.
Can you repeat the question? You say that again, trouble.
I said, is there an option C? Is there move central office out of this space somewhere else? But move all of them each year if we moved preschool out and.
So can you react to that?
I think the question was directed to me, but yes, go ahead.
I thought I heard you say you were looking at.
And I, and I just wanna say it out loud before I forget what I was doing in my head. So first of all, we don't have any place to put the preschool, right? Well, unless we found a place, right? And and I'm already in trouble just saying that out loud right now. So tomorrow will not be pretty for me. No, but I, but so with the twelve classrooms that you pick up in the interior and the eight that you pick up through the modular, and then don't forget, we also have, well, it is twelve. We're gonna have need for special education spaces in some way, shape or form, administrative spaces in some way, shape or form. You you could potentially get, I mean, at that point, you are close to the entire school. You're probably four to six classrooms short, which then would introduce the question about whether or not there are any options for incoming kindergarten students being dispersed elsewhere within the district. And, you know, we could look at that. You know, we could even set up a separate kindergarten bus run that picks up Linn's students and brings them to different location or locations. So I, you're you're close. We're close. We're close with that. I just would worry about, you know, food service, gym space, play space, and it's a lot of bodies on on the site. But as we were looking at the other slide in my head, I was already flipping ahead to this one and thinking, is there an option C? Because if if we can get out of here and we can use the modulators and we can get all the kids out of Lynch, that to me is the ideal scenario from what we just saw. But how tight this is and what the disruption is going to be. Now, that Lynch parents may not feel the same way. But I know what that's going to look like and it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough.
Right, you may have split.
Right, right.
So can I offer? I was beginning to think through the same question, Sheldon. So we have four hundred and sixty four kids at Lynch today. That's the October one number. What I was looking for was what was in the red, Frank's high school in terms of future enrollment, but we all know that's a black box because what's going on with enrollment in COVID? Kids didn't all come back. But we have four, six and four today, right? Sort of put that into context. As you said, there may be opportunities to give enrollment to every, the unique thing about this school district is that all of those Lynch kindergartners are adjacent to one other school district. And some may be literally a street away from Ambrose District.
Right.
Or Morocco. And then the other piece that has come up, it's in the F P D C discussion, is the case of forty B housing developments over the river stream is happening. We all know river is going straight to Lynch. We projected thirty two and thirty six elementary kids. We have just elementary. Could be eighty kids from the district. So there's that issue. But if, given that Sheldon asked the question, can I, can I make a request of Jay that he's anxious to to speak to because Jay, as for some time, spoken about the appeal of the kids offsite and there could be a monetary impact. Would you like to say something about that?
Sixty, I think, funny if we receive sixteen years, we live in twenty schools. All of them have been moved offsite, parents, kids, except for the high school. I should take that back. High school's a different character. There were some tight moments, but we got through them and they went on. B O, Ambrose, the original Lincoln, we had to split Lincoln into two schools, but we got them all off the site while we were doing construction. This is gonna be tight to have work inside. It's gonna be noisy. It's gonna be going on. Even if we went with option one two, I was always thinking of the three because someone's going to start halfway through and not like what's going on. We might stop the middle of the job to find this. If we have an option C and we go at it, like Charlie said, and we tighten the schedule up, it's gonna be more interesting to bid in that job. Right now, going on a school project coming from a contractor, Cory checks and everything that's involved, that that is occupied. So you wouldn't believe how many people can pass Cory checking. Something happened. Contractors will sky away from that job. We won't be getting the cream of the crop bidders. If we give them a vacant site, say you come in, there's nothing holding you back except you can't work at six in the morning, but deliveries come in, there's no one holding back for bus hours. This job's gonna move quicker, be on time, be on schedule and it's a better job.
And Jay, again, much less opportunity, yeah, so I'm gonna go about some dollars because to just given the event that there would be more, more attractive contractors, more bidders and a compressed schedule, their most certainty would be significant savings.
We worked quickly with Hill and you could see a ten percent difference in labor with the occupied space that someone put in mind. Just considering they're gonna have lost time. Parking's gonna be an issue. How how long are the guys taking to get their cars to the job site? Cory checking, there's a lot of things going on. It could be a ten percent that is not in the figures. It's actually above the job. When the bids come in, you could have a ten percent swing on labor when we go to get the job done.
So that's your agreement, right, Jay? Is the more Cory walls will cost us more money too? So.
Just a cleaner. Right, but knowing it upfront, it's gonna be a cleaner job. And and we do walk out. It's going to go into twenty six, lingering around with contractors out there. Fields won't be able to be used, all playgrounds, because grass is growing. That could be a whole year. So it's something to think about. And like you brought it up, it's out there. It's just hasn't been an option. There's a lot involved.
I would add too that that if if we were serious about, remember, we're not, we don't have to be limited to eight modules. That's that's what Charlie has shown on, right? We have some cost information to share with you, I think, on the next slide. If there's concern, whether it's enrollment growth or operational issues that Frank is going with, those eight could become ten, they could become twelve. Charlie just showed you in the previous slide, we have to build a parking lot on the upper field anymore. We're gonna effectively lose that field. So if we wanted to bring the entire Lynch community here and we wanted to do it with modulators, then we may have to add some. That increases some costs. We have to add some parking. But the other option on option A is if we find a home for central office, if that's the carriage house, then and if Lynch doesn't fit here, we might have to add two modulators. I mean, we may still have to add something, but but it's less. But, well, Charlie should move on to the next slide. I mean, I feel like we're in the wrong business because modular is so expensive whether you're renting or, you know.
Can I just say one thing to it? Because ten percent is a lot more savings than what the net would still be a lot more savings, even with the addition of more modulators. Yeah. Because you're talking potentially another five million dollars cost that you'd be at ten, right? Well, okay, three. Yeah, no, but but ten percent, I still think that modular units. I mean, ten percent reduction on, yeah, yeah.
I'm just gonna, I'm just kinda getting at this point. It is just a way to estimate it is a ballpark, it's ten percent of a sub, of a portion of a, of an overall. It doesn't have to be accurate or I can hold you to it, but it's directionally or something, half a million, five million.
That's a question for Hill.
That's for for me, I think, because it's our estimate. I think we know, if you wanna say it, what we think the savings is just in duration. And there was nothing.
Okay, right, duration, you have the, you have any general conditions?
Right, we think, do you want, do you wanna know what the numbers are?
Yes.
Well, so we think just in duration alone, plus the temporary parking lot, there's got nothing to do with this whole conversation about whether it's premium. There there could be a million dollar savings. And that, I think the other conversation you have to be careful with because it's impossible to quantify. I mean, you could have some contractor who's so desperate for work, he said, I had with that, I'm just still gonna kill it. Go ahead. And so we just don't know. And I don't think the estimators will ever be willing to tell us because they're not gonna stick their necks that far out. But we do know that estimators carry a cost per month.
Right.
Month over month. And if we take those months out, then that's reducing the number. So that is something we can quantify. We think it's something like that. So whether it's seven fifty or one twenty, one point two million or whatever, it's gonna be in the, that's sort of what we're thinking.
And it's fair to say too that we really benefited when we bid B O because we were on the backside of the Great Recession. We got crazy bids, right, Jay? We were, we were very pleased. In fact, that's why we were able to do that shell space because the project came in considerably lower than what we were expecting. Right now, it's absolutely crazy. We're we're in the midst, there is a recession, there's conflict in Ukraine, that's affecting supply chains and industries all over the world. I just read this morning Tesla's having to shut down a factory because their aluminum was coming from Russia. And and, you know, we will hopefully soon talk about even the Morocco project and electrical work we wanna get done and how the supply chain is impacting that. So it's sort of impossible to know how this is gonna play out and affect bids and interest, you know, months from now. It's all, a lot of this sort of up in the air.
Exactly right. But there's so much with the abatement. There's so much going on that could be done with no children on the site.
Oh, yeah, yeah, beyond the savings, just the.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, they're not on the site. The building's coming down. You're not stopping construction from tests going on. It's just, it's just a cleaner job if it could happen.
And we should acknowledge, Jay, too, that in a couple of the F P B C meetings, we hold them like a webinar format, but parents will sometimes watch and will type questions in Q and A. And when we can, we field those questions. There have been questions and concerns about, you know, are the soils contaminated? And you have that answer, no. Soils don't require any special handling. But there was concern about abating the building while more kids are on site. And I think Mark Stott did a good job describing what that entails, the qualifications and precautions, but still, that concern is there.
And to that point, it's generally not fun to run a school on a construction site.
No, that's, that's a fair statement. Yeah. Especially fun being a qualifier, right?
So anyway, so so all of this has a cost, right? So if the, if everyone is in agreement that there is a, there is a real concern about about students on site, the cost premise in this di- this this document here is that we're relocating two or three grades offsite. It is not a plan for removing all students offsite. That is entirely that, that if that's option C, option C does not appear here. But option A says we're gonna take the students, we're gonna, we're gonna relocate district offices to the carriage house because the carriage house has obviously been under discussion as an option. And if we relocate central office to the carriage house, then we do some limited upgrades, is what I mentioned earlier, to the parkers school itself, which again, we need whiteboards, we need, you know, some paint, we need. But you don't need too much. I mean, there were significant upgrades done to it, both when it was used as swing space with B O and then obviously more recently with flood and with the accessibility upgrade. So the building has gotten some work. And so we think we can do that for not too much money. So if we combine what the estimated project cost is of the of the carriage house plus upgrades to the car burst and some limited soft costs, we get to about a six point four million dollar project. And it is predicated on the idea that we need to empty this building in order to put students in it. If we don't empty the building to put students in it, then we go to that other plan that showed the modulators in the yard here. And the estimators are using around a quarter of a million dollars per classroom for for modulators, which gets us two million dollars. We need to mo- we need to do site work modifications, which I mentioned to you. We then need to restore that afterwards. And we then obviously have some soft costs around that. And that gets us to about a three million dollar project. The difference between A and B, of course, is that A is all money, town money being invested in permanent improvements. Plus, option B is money that is literally going out the window. None of it is recovered. None of it actually goes to benefit ultimately long term the town in any way. Because I mean, the fact that we're actually undoing all the same work we're doing indicates to you the fact that truly this money is just being flying out the window. Because what we're doing is we're leasing modulators, we're bringing them here, we're placing them here, we're then paying to have them removed again later. And then we're paying to redo all that site work we did. So 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 the benefit of option A, of course, is these are permanent infrastructure improvements for the community that that have longevity to them. So.
The reason we're paying to remove them is because we're not buying them. We're actually.
You're leasing them. Yeah, no, this is a lease option. So option C over there on the right would truly be predicated as well on the idea that district administration is not in this building. So you gotta keep that in mind. It does not, it does not, you know, option C, you have to kind of follow some sort of option A plan approach. Because you've got, still gotta move central office out of this building in order to get to even consider getting the entire Lynch over here. So if there is an option C and that begins to be part of this dialogue, we, it's it's more on the line of option A than it is with option B because the only way we're gonna do it is again, to get Frank and his staff out of this building in order to get students into it. So I'd say option, it's really option A and option B is below it. And then, excuse me, option C is below it. And then option B is just a straight modular project. So let me just go to the fine. I'm almost done, fortunately, because I'm happy to stop talking. But if we go to the timeline, the reason this is all coming up now is that if if option A it makes sense to the community and it's up to the community, it is enough for us, we need to get started on that in order to have a completed carriage house in time for the district to move out of this building and into it in order to upgrade this building, in order to receive students, however many students that is, two grades, three grades, by by the fall of twenty twenty four, so that we can start work on, I mean, excuse me, fall twenty twenty three, so that we can start work on the Lynch project. So that really means that documents have to be done for the carriage house project in the summer. It has to be bid in the fall. It has to be constructed in the winter so that it can open in the spring of twenty three, so that the parkers can be evacuated by, you know, the end of the school year. So there's a period of time to do improvements to the parkers and get it ready for students to arrive in the fall of twenty three. And that's happening in parallel to the Lynch project, which the documents are being developed and is bidding. And construction is beginning on an early phase, which is that demolition phase in the fall of twenty three. So the 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 large project, the building project, except proper, we start in January twenty four. But that early enabling phase, which allows us to do some demolition as temporary measures, would have to happen in the. the large project, the building project, except proper, we start in January twenty four, but that early enabling phase, which allows us to do some demolition as temporary measures, would have to happen in the fall, so that it's ready for the start of construction, and that drives moving the kiddos into the, um, moving the kiddos into here earlier, so they really need to come in September of that year. So you can see, there's no real way to make this decision later, we need to make it now, uh, in order, e, and, and if it, in, 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 in fact, even with the modular project, there's not really enough time to wait till a, a, a January of next year debt override, in order to, um, in order to start on that process, because we have to design, advertise, procure, modulators, they need to be fabricated, they need to be shipped here, and that whole, uh, that whole process also has to happen, I mean, they have to be, uh, up and ready to go, again, in the summer of twenty three, which means we need to be started earlier than a, than a, you know, uh, I mean, I think probably we could start in Fall Town meeting, I just don't think you could wait till that, um, till that override vote at the end. So because of that, that's why all this is coming up so early, so there could be an argument, gee, isn't it kinda early days to be talking about swing space, unfortunately, it's not, because of the way the schedule shakes out, so that's sort of why all of this is coming up now, um, and I think I'm done.
I can add, you know, this is all been, last week it really started to come together, that's one day, when the timeline was up there with, in the options, and that's when the motion was made to come up with two Warren article, and then the added for a second article, um, when we saw that there is a chance, that this is the only way to pull it off, or we just, like, like Charlie said, go with the modules, even the second, uh, Warren article, um, would be, at least, have to design on the, if the first one didn't go, second will at least get you going on a design for the modules, but that one in itself will be tight. The bidding process, that will be a tight process.
It is, correct. So the, the idea that came up, so that EFBC, EFPC meeting before maybe does not wanna go for town meeting and give only one option. If there was one option, it needs to come in the spring, because if we wait until the fall, and we say, this is the swing space plan, and it fails, we're sort of caught, we don't have a plan, right? So the idea is, go to town meeting in the spring and say, this is the preferred option, this is how it would happen, this is what it would cost and why. And then if it fails, this came up at the last meeting, which was a great suggestion from Mr. Miller, make really clear that we're not saying it's all or nothing, that the preferred option is carriage house, move Frank and team, put right now, it stands about half a million bucks in this building, get it ready for kids, that's the preferred option. If that should not pass, we then go to the subsequent article, which says, and I'll, I'll actually read this real quick, I was gonna suggest Frank to have a second, I'll read it, so the first article is to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of money for the design construction and renovation of the St. Paul carriage house, for the relocation of Winchester Public Schools admin central offices from Parkers, as outlined in Article twenty eight Fall Town Meeting and the Ten Year Master Plan, and for the design, and for the design, construction and alteration of Parkers for use as temporary educational swing space to accommodate the development of Lynch replacement project, including all costs incidental related there too. The second article, which James described, is much smaller, and it says, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of money for the design and engineering for alterations necessary for Parkers' role in preparation for uses temporary educational swing space, to accommodate the development of the Lynch replacement project, including all costs incidental related there too, et cetera, et cetera. What's interesting is, in the, the language in both of these, they don't refer to an A or B, and as we were talking about C, the language as it exists in Article One could support C. So it can happen, right? Uh, no, because two is just some, it's just limited to design. The problem with two, it doesn't get district offices right anywhere else.
Well, not in this, at this particular time, but we still have a plan for that.
Well, as long as we didn't. So so to carry that thought, just to carry the thought further, this conversation, I'm so happy we're finally like having this conversation, because you know, the EFPC is good at sort of understanding with Charlie and Hill's input, what's the problem? What are the solutions, narrowing those down, the EFPC doesn't like to operate on ifs or what ifs or maybes, but you know, what, what do we control, so we have this site, we have this building, and we have the fields, and we have the park, and we could presumably put out a package and buy things and put them in the park, so we have sort of control of that. The same is true for the carriage house, but it was important, I think, to come back and share this with the school committee, so that you could understand kind of what these options look like, what they, relative to one another, what they cost, what the impacts are, and, I, I mean, I don't wanna speak out of turn, Frank, but you know, if this committee were to say, you know, we're really strong in favor getting everybody offsite, if possible. I mean, if, if that's really a goal, which I think is a very admirable goal, but the challenge, I think, has always been up to this point, the EFPC feeling like, well, how would we do it where we put them, but you know, we could certainly if Frank, some, you know, marching orders in terms of thinking operationally, how to accommodate it, as you see in the diagram, we could put more modulators in the parking lot, it just basically means, I think, we'd be left with maybe five or six handicapped accessible spaces, right, because that would have to be the accessible route, if you build a bigger lot up on top, it could be done, but the language as it's, as it has been submitted, can still make that happen, because this Article One doesn't say eight modules, and it doesn't say six, and it doesn't say twelve, and it doesn't say there's a parking lot here or here, it's, it tells enough of what it's about, but it gives flexibility to the EFPC or TAPE to bring that in.
To that point, do we have the sentiment of the community, Tom and you and others, but what is the ledge that you want during this time? They all wanna be offsite, they want some people offsite, is, is anyone kind of able to ask me that?
So I, go ahead, Tom.
You know what the community wants.
I don't, just it, just from a process standpoint, just so the committee knows, I have, uh, I'm assembling a group of parents and teachers, we'll be meeting on the twenty fourth, Charlie's gonna come in and kind of take them through what we just saw, I mean, every time I go through this, I just learn more, and, and I, and I think differently about it, and option C, even though it's been kind of think, I've been, you know, always, but really, tonight, for whatever reason, I was struck more by how it would be a good thing for us to really try to figure out whether we could get to an option C and what that would look like, so whether you give me the charge to do that or not, it's, I think it's worth our exploration at this point, because it just, you know, when you cut the playground in half, and the question about what's the play area, and there's a fence running through it, and on the other side's construction, I mean, it kind of points to, there's, it would, you know, we really need to explore it, so, so they will be an input process, but I obviously don't live in Lynch community.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so, so, two things, um, one, that's a fair question, and, you know, my impression, and, and I've talked to, to some parents who, you know, they really like, you know, there's such a sense of community within Lynch, that, that's putting us all up, and then, yeah, that's definitely a sentiment, there's also a lot of, you know, affinity for the current Lynch, and so, you know, I, I think it's very good that you have a process that will, um, event out some of that. Um, the, the experience, you know, as you say, when it's unclear, you'll have playground, unclear, you know, the, you know, the pickups and drop offs, you know, like, it, it, it's, I don't see it being a good experience for students to be in that space, um, and, and such, I know there's gonna be lots of, um,
Do you mean avalanche?
Yeah, avalanche during this.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I know that, that they'll follow all the appropriate standards and all the abatement and stuff, but yeah, part of the building is torn down, so we won't, you know, there's just, there's a lot of, um, you know, a, a lot of, yeah, well, no, it is, you know, they're, they're pounding, you know, ivy to the ground, if, if they're, um, if, if there's, you know, asbestos parts of the building that are just walked off and sealed up, you know, appropriately, I'm sure we can do it right, but, um, you know, my, my sense is that we should at least look at, um, the viability of an option C, I think, is very, is a really good point about, about that, uh, I think that would be best, that, and, and best to, to understand what, so that was my point, uh, yeah, I, the, the question I had was really more around, um, you know, the, it, it seems that there's, with option A and option B, it's, it's a choice of buying versus renting, and, you know, we can, you know, buy or invest in, 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 in a future that, that is, you know, for six million dollars, or we can, you know, rent, or as you said, throw three million dollars out the window, and a few years later not see, have, see any value of that, other than, you know, we got this project, and I'm curious what, um, uh, what additional, you know, so, to the totality of those two options, you know, what do I own, you know, on, on one hand, if we rent, you know, we own the ongoing maintenance or whatever happens to the carriage house, uh, at some point, uh, we don't own a lot more, you know, we just, we just borrowed some stuff, but rented it and returned it, um, and then on, on the, what do I own, you know, it strikes me that, that you know, we, we own a building that, that should be in pretty good shape for a while, and, and, and we own, you know, we, we own this building as well, and, and, you know, I know there's been talk over time about possibly renting this building and earning income, and, you know, I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, all of the numbers, because it seems, they, they may not be huge, but on the renting option, that there are some additional costs that, that may be on, on there, and on the owning option, there might be some, uh, offsetting income that we might not see on there, that might bring that delta a little bit closer together, um, uh, so I guess that's my question.
If I can jump it on, you have a lot of, a lot of points that we're bringing up, um, you go into the carriage house, it's brand new, finally, you know, central office has a home. When, when we did Ambrose, we put the infrastructure in for the carriage house, because it was always going to be, this was sixteen years ago, eighteen years ago, central office is gonna go there, the conduits are under the, uh, parking lot, it was all, it's always been a home, it works, just keeps on pushing down, road, move them around, it's a Lynch, you know. Once they're over there, it's done, I mean, I hope we bought a ten year building maintenance free, then you look at this building, master plan says you're gonna, I guess, I don't know, who makes the decisions, school department or what, um, what you're gonna do with this, but if you rent it, there's an income, uh, it could always be surplus too. Either way, central office isn't coming back and prolonging the maintenance issues going on here, uh, the hurting stops with fixing this building, so we either get rented out, and whoever's gonna rent it's gonna come in here, and, for the child, whatever they're gonna do, they're gonna, uh, rent it, come in here, they own it at that point, it's just a shelf they rent. Or it does get surplus, that's a decision someone makes, that's not EFPC to make the decision, but it wasn't the master plan to come up with, so. You'd have a triple net lease where they would be renting a shelf, you know, and they own everything to deal with it, it'd be worth it to move this place. They just get.
If they don't ask us for things.
Right, it would be the perfect scenario, but I think, uh, thinking about it, uh, coming in and just taking a chance, knowing that you could sell it if that didn't happen, that once you're out and you're into the carriage house, let's say, um, you try to rent, if it doesn't happen, there's always the option to sell it, so there's, there's an out either way, I would say, financially.
The current assessed value of this person is ten point four thirty dollars. On the town system. Um, I wanna make a couple of other clarifications on cost, so, and there's, I need the asterisk, there's a double asterisk, asterisk there that speaks to it, it's the chow, another element of, of complexity here, option B, I think we all know swing space is not reimbursable by the N S K, however, it's still eligible to be included in the project funding agreement, so, on the one hand, there's a way to pay for kind of two year temporary solution, but then you keep paying for it for eighteen years, it, it's a lot of money, but in big picture, it's a small piece of the overall product. So the, the pathway to funding is clearer with options, because you can roll it in, with option A, I think there's a double asterisk, yes, the, for the, those two lines that Charlie puts up there, that six point four million dollars, we should be clear, the work that's included in that for Parkers, the upgrades of Parkers, Parker's soft costs, which right now we're showing with five seventy five, that also is eligible to be rolled into the project funding. So it's, it's literally the carriage house number that's not, so, so when we think about how, if we were to go with option A or a C, which may be almost like A plus B, I mean, it's, it's, C is almost A plus B, because it's getting everybody out of here, and maybe bringing in some modulators, but it, it's really just the work specific to the carriage house, that we have to figure out how to pay for it. Um, and the select board was discussing this, I think, the meeting before last, because they heard, you know, some rumors when you were talking about this at EFPC, and I wanna give Mariano a lot of credit, he said something in that discussion, which is that we never really contemplated like a twenty year general obligation bond for that much money, call it succession loan dollars, without a plan, without a pay for, whether it's fees or offset revenue or what that, so he's absolutely right, and I think that's why this, this issue of, you know, renting the building comes into play. Uh, what I wanted to throw out there again, on the number side, is, uh, our, our treasurer, Frank and I reached out to Sheila, uh, our treasurer, to get some information on what we might expect in terms of interest rates, so she's been giving some of that information to Meg and the EFPC, both for how we figure the Lynch project would cost, remember, we're talking about January override. And then for something like this, which is less money, cross possibly funded earlier, she's recommended having talked to, uh, Phil Top, who's a, they help us with, you know, uh, to be between four and four and a half percent. So what I can share with this community, with this committee, just to be random numbers, if we, if we were bonding six point two million dollars, which would be less than what Charlie was showing, but if we were bonding six point two, twenty years, at four percent, that's an annual debt service of four hundred and fifty grand. And if we were doing it at four and a half percent, it's an extra twenty grand, so it's four cent. This building, which I keep saying is twenty four thousand square feet, our assessor says twenty five, so, so call, split the difference, it's called, call it about twenty five thousand, I think it's close, what's that? In ten, yeah, Charlie keeps telling me it's thirty, so we're gonna do the math, if it's thirty, that's even better news, because we generate more money, but I always like to be on the low side and not the high side, if, if we, if we feel comfortable, given some information that the administration has received about, you know, prospective tenants and what the market may look like, not now, but, you know, in the future, if rates continue, rental rates continue to go up. Renting this building at twenty bucks a foot covers the debt service with money. So that's the frame in which to consider this, I do think it would be really irresponsible for any of us, you know, the EFPC, the Little Town Meeting, to say, we wanna borrow, whether it's six point two, or six point four, or five point eight, and we have no idea how to pay for it. First of all, you can't do that.
What happens if we don't rent it, and how do we pay off the head service?
I think we have to look at the option surpluses as a fallback, but at least.
But in the meantime, that's four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Oh. I think a ban is the way to go, that's the way we've handled in the past, Michelle, so for instance, the fees of golden study at Winchester High School was funded in advance of the bond anticipation note, where you're only making interest payments, and then when the, when the project actually was voted, then that remaining balance got rolled into the, uh, the long term bond, so there's a way to, to bridge that, there's still an interest payment that needs to be paid, and I can't tell you what that, I don't know what the interest only would be on that, but it's, it's obviously.
So we should see the numbers on all those, so that we can, because we just got this information this day, so we probably need to see the numbers on all of that, those things, because that's a risk assessment for this committee, to ask the town to take on a loan that isn't covered by the Lynch project.
So that's actually on the, so the EFPC, now that they've just voted this article, that's, that's next for management, is to begin, management wants to know, I think we all saw the letter from Beth, so they really wanna know, well, what would these options cost? So based on the work that Charlie and his estimator have just done, we've got a pretty good sense of what they cost, what we could do, if there's interest, and we think there's interest, is figure out what would, could we figure out what C could cost, I think we can do that. Um, then we gotta have a conversation about, so what is that motion, what does the motion look like? I also wanna get back, you asked a good question about Article Two, would that, the reason why, and I don't wanna speak for Charlie here, but because Article Two is really just you're buying the design time for professionals, it probably, probably wouldn't be much different money for you to put together a design package for twelve modulators instead of eight, you know, in a slightly bigger parking lot, right, I mean, it's substantially the same work ethic, the real difference in Article Two, if we needed an extra two or four modulators, and needed the extra parking lot, would just be on the construction side, that would just cost a lot of money. So the good news is, as written, the articles still support, you know, option A, option B, and I feel that Article One could support option C. Article one, well, Article one, Article one is pretty much.
Article one, Article one is pretty much needs, I mean. I mean, right, Option C is is equally dependent as Option A on having some district administration somewhere else. So there is no option C without Frank and his team somewhere else, just like there's no option A without. You know, I mean, the the point of A is that we have a plan, which is the carriage house. So so really, yeah, the only difference between A and C. Is is how much extra work we have to do here. And that you need to kind of do a little analysis of where you. We have the, we, the numbers are there. It's really, it's a plug and play thing. It's more a question of figuring out in advance. Where the student, how how many, where the students go? Are they distributed to other schools?
Do we know sitting here right now that we could do twelve modulars on this site?
I think it would be.
Because the answer to that will depend then, once you, once I, you want to go back to your site plan, Charlie?
Twelve is a lot. It's also a lot of money. But but yeah, you would, you would know, you'd go this way, right?
The option of putting the modules at an angle.
The problem is grade, grade is not our friend.
Yeah, I brought that up.
It's sometimes the price tag is going to get so much that that, so I think, I think the real question is if you had, you know, if you could get. Three grades here and two grades there. That's five grades, right? Yes. And that 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 we know this time, right?
Yeah, I just don't, I think everyone, we also just need to remember that there's a lot of support spaces that are needed to run a school, so. I don't want to underestimate the fact that we're going to probably be taking a couple of these classrooms and they're going to become small. Group spaces or resource room or admin office.
Might be something like these two trailers are divided up, you know, for some admin or support staff, you know, break these up.
And I think, you know, the other piece of this too, with what's unique at Lynch is we have district-wide programs there too. That's not an easy move. So where would those go, you know, and there's, we we include kids in that and some in those programs. Into general classroom, so they need to be in a school. So it's completely, completely doable from a planning standpoint. Just the question is. If we can get twelve on here, okay, if we can only get ten, if we can only get eight, then as long as we know that answer, we can take the next step with C.
Can I ask, can I ask a quick question? Because I, I think a couple of members had a hard stop at seven, so just. Is it, how unreasonable is that if we could truncate the project schedule? And we're building a new building while they're tearing one down and all the kids get off site, realizing general conditions get cut, but assuming that Jay's right. And I think to some extent, I really believe Jay, you are right. The question is how do you monetize? I mean, I really know.
How do you save money you have not yet spent?
Let me throw this out there. Is it completely outside the realm of possibility that we could save? All in with general conditions, could we save up to three million dollars on the Lynch project if we shorten it in this way? Charlie buries his head in his hands.
Seeing that a million would come off general conditions right off the bat, uh and the driveway and that stuff. I I I would not see any issue. I couldn't save too many dollars in labor. And 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 the other, the other.
Backing all of us into a corner here. You only, our estimator says, I refuse to estimate, you know, I'm not going to give you a discount.
Hill, Hill has this experience. And they can run the numbers. They've done occupied and non-occupied spaces.
Well, so we, I mean, but the, if the estimator is telling us they're not going to give you a discount on your es- on the estimate. For this, they're saying.
It's not a discount as much as when the bids are coming in, what's going up as we see with the market going right now. It's it's really not as much as a discount as shock when the bids come in that it went up for the spaces. It's just, it's a tight space.
Well, I know, but all I'm saying is you can't, I don't think you can play, use it as a planning tool, right?
That's fine, that's fine. So can we go to just the next slide, Frank? By the way, this is.
Everyone's screaming.
This, this is just the point I wanted to make. Even if, even if all in. Even if all in, we only save half that, we save one and a half million dollars, like can I shame a sense really, do you support the idea of exploring an option C? To get everybody off site? That was your question you asked. Do we have, do we have a consensus that that, without a vote, that that's something we'd be interested in?
Option C.
Doesn't mean we're doing it. Is that something we want to explore with?
You could, you could have whatever consensus you want. I'm going to explore it because I just think. Operationally, it's just makes, it would make a lot of sense. If we don't look at it, then. I'm going to take the charge of looking at Option C strictly from the standpoint of. You have to make the assumption that that's going to happen, right? So knowing that that would have to happen in an option C. I'm only going to be looking at what are the options for us in terms of distribution of students? Because that's, that's where we need, I need to spend. Killing me, just killing me.
You don't, you wouldn't do it if you don't know.
Yeah, and 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 exploring option C really should be done. It's the only fair thing to do and knowing that if it doesn't work.
Right, right, we have to be able to answer the question.
All the other schools are off site. This is the only one that's partial or something. We need to say, no, it doesn't work. There's no way that you can make it work or. Yes, it can work, but there's a dollar value to it. We need to have that number.
I've been involved in eight construction projects and I've never seen a site this tight.
I mean, you you have to picture people trying to, trucks lined up to make deliveries on the street and they can't get by them.
We started talking about doing Lynch and keeping the kids on site, we anticipated. Which would put more distance between the kids, so the inability to build on the field, which for whatever engineering reasons.
Yeah, I I don't, I I wasn't aware we were looking at putting Lynch on the field only because of our bad experience on the high school.
It went away at the high school.
I I think it's it's helpful for us to have consensus on C only because then the message Jay can bring back to the EFPBC is, okay. Came Charlie, we met the school committee, presented A and B, and you know, there there's real interest in the value of getting kids off site. Shorten the overall project, have the Lynch community sort of stay together. What's that going to take? We can solve it architecturally with modulars, maybe, you know, it, maybe we only need to add two modules. It all depends upon the distribution of space, Frank, to your point, the specialists and so forth, because Sarah Casey can't have like meetings.
Well, I mean, I'm going to have to rethink all that, so.
Well, I think if, if, again, EFPBC is driving the bus, and so the EFPBC didn't. We have, it, it's not the first time we've talked about the prospect of getting people off site. We, it was more about how how big of a bite do we want to take? If the school committee is saying, there's, we see real value in this and there's support for doing that, if it makes financial sense and planning sense in terms of Frank. Then I think that is absolutely something that EFPBC.
I'm going to say we have consensus because I think I'm hearing that there is consensus to look at C with whatever parameters we're talking about. Which would be, but to address the idea, can we get all the kids off site, right? That's C. However you want to frame it, that is C.
If 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 the EFPBC and Frank can figure this out, if there's a way to do C. We're interested in C.
Well, it helps, it helps with parent communication conversation next week.
I don't think we can, I I think we need to do the legwork for you and come back with a C, but have a good look at it. Back what it's C would be. Love to say, yes, you you want to see and get the kids off the site, but we do not have that. We can't show you anything right now. We need to.
Time, time is short because we have, we need to come up with the number, the the cost like.
Can I?
So, so the article was submitted, but what's next to. Motion language needs to say, this is how much money it's going to cost. So Frank. Deadline to the motion language, I think Meg said was the either the eleventh or fourteenth, somewhere around there, next month. So that that establishes the timeline to understand, can C work? What does C look like?
Well, C has to be A.
What's that?
C is the A. Yes, no, but C is.
See, you're right. C, C is A plus maybe some additional.
Yeah, but see, there's no, you're not, you're, is your language, the only language. The only thing in your motions is going to be design money, which we can figure out. You don't have.
No, I'm sorry. A, C is the cost of A and the cost of B.
Not the, not only just about the language. I mean, in fact, the matter is, C is A.
It is. C is A plus some measure of modules.
Right, no, I understand, yeah, see, we're, we're, I'm trying to say that from a, I'm trying to say not from a capital cost, not total cost. It's like that just.
The motion is around. The motion has to include the cost, so the article is, so the article is all set. The article language. For Article One supports A and A plus some modulars of what we're calling C. A and C are both supported by Article One. The difference is what is it cost? That's where the rubber meets.
Can you give me the date again? It's the one we would be.
I think it's the eleventh.
Of, not of March, I hope, because I'm already late.
Could you have classrooms, could you have classrooms without?
So there are classrooms downstairs that are unused, right?
No, they're not unused, but yes, they're not used as general classrooms.
There's quite a few more classrooms than the ones that are being deployed as, as general classrooms, right? I would.
Yeah, I'd rather not answer those questions right now.
Would say we have deployed our generally classrooms downstairs, but in addition, we have larger assembly spaces for things like music, library, art. We also have some office space. I mean, Frank, all the way downstairs.
Those things are available then, is what I'm saying.
They're available spaces.
Yeah.
Yes.
Frank earlier was saying, well, gee, what about special spaces and art and music? Some of that potentially exists.
But to Frank's earlier point, it's not just classrooms, it's a workspace. So even today, if you have a kid who's three years old, who's on an IEP or something. And you come for a team meeting, that happens downstairs somewhere. It doesn't happen at the classroom.
I was just saying, Charlie also though, we're looking at the whole field of portals. Maybe we could put office style portals down in the lower. Uh driveway area to be one of those breakout or if we need some of those special areas, not be part of the field up here, but. You're not right, but it doesn't need the water and stuff, right?
As long as we maintain our accessible parking, accessible route and all that good stuff.
Just an extension to the gym.
So for the purposes of this discussion, I I would, I think, I think that's an EFPBC discussion, right? So I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that there's definite interest in trying, in administratively us going back and trying to figure out what. Could it look like if we were trying to get all of Lynch off the site, which would then involve also looking at our other buildings? Proximity of kids, programs, spaces available elsewhere, kindergarten options, other options, preschool. We might have to consider, I have to, you know, open my mind back up about that. And then coming back and just laying out what the possibilities as we see them are.
And just to be clear about how that redistribution of kindergarten will really look district wide. We typically have, I mean, I I don't have them in front of me, we typically have four or five kindergarten sections at elementary school, right? It's it's four or it's five. I don't know what we have at Lynch right now, but one can imagine then, so you're you're absorbing sort of. It it's it's net one kindergarten classroom, right? So Lincoln might pick up one, Morocco might pick up one.
Right.
Ambrose could pick up on that kind of thing. So to to give a sense of sort of the pain that's here, right?
It may not be a one for one, right?
That's absolutely right, so.
Can I ask one last question? My Eric, I'm sorry. If we add A and B and you get roughly nine point four million and. All except the five point eight five to get rolled into the project cost. Is that right?
The five point eight five does not get rolled into the project at all.
So so, you know, even though the number gets a little bit bigger, that goes into the overall Lynch project, the carriage house.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Yeah, I I think it's definitely worth looking.
That's why I was asking Charlie or Jay to sort of, what's their comfort level about what they think you could save? Because if, first of all, I I'm not convinced, if we could get out, if we could get preschool out of here and we redistribute kindergarten. I don't know that we need to add three million dollars worth of modulars to make C work.
I don't disagree with that, but I'd like to know if we can do it. So then I know what the potential is, because I agree. I mean, obviously, the less modular cost we can incur, the better.
Be- because it's it's a value proposition that even even if, even if you're not able to save three million dollars, if we, let's say we save a million.
Just the high cost, just the high cost that you know.
Let's just say, let's say there's a, let's say there's a two million dollar cost, but what is that bias? There are some, some real advantages to that. All good stuff.
Yeah, it's it's going to be, yeah, always looking forward to the challenge.
But what I appreciate Jay said tonight is that if, I mean, I, my sense from. Interactions that the previous superintendent had, we had prospective tenants reach out to us interested in partners. We were unable to rent the building because the elevator was not installed. And in fact, for one, the message was, well, come back to me when the elevator is installed. But then the elevator went in, we moved pre K. So I I have some comfort that there's real latent interest there. Um in the building, but Jay makes an interesting point, which is that folks are looking for sort of that. The safety, the security, the security net, the safety blanket, whatever I'm trying to say, that there's always that option. If if for whatever reason, in some parallel universe, nobody's interested in renting this building, and I don't know why they would. Because especially when Charlie's done with it, the only piece of ADA work that's left to do is to make the stairways accessible. Our handrails, the guardrails need to be revised. That was the only thing that was left in this building. So why would someone not take?
But it gives you that peace of mind, you know, I don't want in two years, they turn around and say, we're done with, you know, we're done. Pockers is sitting there, you know, what did you do to this town? We need all this stuff, but knowing there's a safety net, and if it doesn't rent, it can be sold. And even if it was a a net zero at the end, but it would, it would bring in enough to cover the cost and so.
I think that's a reasonable expectation.
There's no reason this wouldn't sell. Without a doubt. So there, you have that, that the hurting can end at some point with fixing this building. Otherwise, it's just a one.
I think it's something we're asking for, excuse me, further research into an option C. And it sounds like there are multiple aspects to that. And then we will bring that back for our school committee consideration at a later date.
Uh well, no, not exactly. So so now the EFPBC needs to be submitting motion language. So so this is why I was interested in getting a feel for the table, because if the preference, if if the preference is for C. Because if the preference, if, if the preference is for C, then if the EFPBC can figure that out and Frank is com- Frank needs to be comfortable with it operationally. Then the EFPBC may say, oh, well, now that we know that the school committee really prefers this simpler solution and the truncated timeline, that may be the direction that the EFPBC chooses to go. And would simply come back and, you know, maybe through you and memo Jay, let the school committee know, okay, we talked about this, we explored it, this is what it costs. You know, Frank, you'll be here at the table superintendent to talk about it. It may simply become the EFPBC's new preferred option. Remember what Charlie showed was. What's that?
We can still need to come back to school. So I can have a fun agenda prior to.
At, at this time, I mean, it's, it's three weeks, so we have three full weeks. And, you know, I mean, I, I think that I can, I think we can make a good run at.
Yeah.
The options within a week, two weeks. Like in two weeks, I think we can have a pretty solid conceptual look at, at an option C.
And, and the chart can change, it can be an A or B and C.
Right.
And I, I just add that, that, but what I heard was that a lot of information about the quality of the experience and the complexity of, and the savings and, and whatnot. And, and, and my sense was that there, there, there was a general sense that we would prefer to go with an option where all the kids are off the site. And, and what was missing is we don't know what the cost of that is. So we have a preference for it depending on what it looks like. And so gathering that, you're doing that assessment of, well, and the logistics to be able to manage the kids and where they're gonna go.
It's kind of the first time though, Tom, that I've heard more strongly that that is an option we really wanna pursue about getting all the kids offsite. I think the discussions we had at EFPBC, while it's, we've, we've nibbled around, it's been, it would be nice, but we've really not come down and said, you know, we need to develop that option out.
Well, because I don't think that's the EFPBC's place to say, remember that EFPBC's job is to say, how many kids do we have to get off, camp offsite?
Well, that's why we had, had this discussion tonight.
We could have come here with options, option A could have been the C and spending all this, and it wasn't the intent. So this is the best that could have happened, it's come in here with the, A works, B works, and C is just a, a better option, if it can work. But it, it's really on, on the school, school department.
And I wanted to just, that's historical observation, it's important with respect to C. There is, some would say equity component to this too. When we did the complete renovation of the historic Lincoln Elementary School from 98 to 2000, all those kids were moved offsite. There was 99 to 2000. In fact, half of them, Jay, they half came here, the other half went to miss it.
One, two, three, yeah.
That's why we did not. The Bartlett School, private school, was here leasing from 1981 to 1999. The only reason they left is because we kicked them out and said, we need the space.
Right.
So Lincoln enjoyed being completely offsite. And then Ambrose enjoyed being completely offsite. And then VO enjoyed being completely offsite. And here we are looking at Lynch and we're wondering how we can do this and keep Africans there. So.
And, and we, and we went through what happened at the high school.
We did.
Not.
And high school is a thousand times easier than elementary.
Those are different kids, those are young adults.
Well, and, and I have to say, I keep thinking about, you know, construction and, and, and high school, you're at the down of the bone to build it back up and that was disruptive. But I imagine that we're, you know, we're ramming steel beams down bedrock, you know, like forty or fifty feet away from little kids, you know, like that.
The high school was the complaints, people going home, it was even from trucks running, cement trucks running in the parking lot.
The fumes.
The fumes.
Dust.
The generator, the lifts all had.
The wind changes day to day and blows in one window and out another.
The type of articulating lifts within the building, the heating system, temporary heating system had changed to a pop a lot of heating system. It just wasn't efficient.
Middle of the day, you lose power because someone makes a mistake on a pan, I mean.
Yeah, so, so, and I, I, I think that the, I think the general community may not, you know, appreciate all of that. I mean, we're not talking about like a hundred yards of, we're talking about like, like, right here.
Yeah.
Well, I think this, this slide tonight was the slide that just kind of hit me, to be honest. Because that's, we were talking about, she was, Mr. Brady asked a question about play area and that's the play area. And that's, that's the line.
It's interesting, the kids are gonna come in with like a coating of dust on them.
I just don't know how, I'm sure, you know, I, I know that it'll work and I know that, you know, the phasing will work and all precautions, I'm not even worried about from a safety perspective. But it's not ideal and it's from just a running a, a school program, that's two years of some pain.
Also, I think by time, then.
Yes, so it's perfect timing from that perspective, yes, yes, yep, yep. Yeah, because I will go into next Thursday meeting saying, A, B, and we now are talking C and here's why, and Charlie can, you know.
If you're not, you have to mix it.
Yeah.
If you, if you don't have, you're looking at now, but you're gonna go back and look at it back. If it really doesn't work, then you have to mix.
There's probably a C in my head, there's probably a C one and a C two. A C one is when we bring in twelve modular units or C two is that. C one is, we can do it with A and here's what it would look like.
And I think you have to look hard at the downstairs.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Can I suggest as a practical matter, I think we wipe out completely that little Peewee field in C. Because when this was last, and I want Karen to speak up here, you just agree. You're family, I'm saying. She was, she was a parent here with VO, Charlie, when VO kids were here, Karen was a parent. So that was fourteen sections that VO, we fit into this building. And so teachers and staff, it was parent pickup, drop off buses, and it was pretty busy, it was a little difficult at first. But we're talking about in C, more kids, so. And, and, and so more volume, right? So I'm imagining. Imagining we just go big and pave that up for parking lot.
Well, we're gonna need it. I would agree with that and I think that the neighbors would appreciate probably not having a parking lot right across the street, right? So, yeah, yeah.
The off-street parking to minimize the impact.
Yeah, we need to get back in here and use that space.
Actually, also what's changed since you were here as a parent is they've actually gone and built more houses across the street too, so we got more neighbors.
No one's gonna wanna see cars and.
No. No, lights flashing right through the window.
As long as we keep the handicap accessibility down at the lower level and everyone else get locked up.
Yeah.
Just like going to the lot in the back of the YO.
Yeah.
You have the upper lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
So Charlie, what do you, what do you need and from whom? Frank clearly has a lot.
Frank and I need chat.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
My ears will be ringing there in that chat.
Can I suggest when we adjourn this meeting and it might be in a moment, you know, we can take site visits outside of public meeting anyway, people want to tag along, you know, may wanna just go downstairs and look.
Take a look, yep.
The, and I just think also. Everybody can't lose sight of the fact that C is a version of A.
Oh, yeah. It's entirely dependent on district administration.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only way it works, right?
I sort of think, this kind of this discussion, oh, it's a third way. It is not a third way, it's A prime, it's A, A on steroids. It's not, it's.
No, I think the understanding Charlie is if A was a way to get central office out so that we can accommodate some students, C is a way to get central office out. It's carried out the way this article's written.
Yeah.
Except now we're gonna accommodate all the students because we're gonna have to go a little bigger on modulars or whatnot.
And I think in fairness, you have to, I know you've done the paperwork before, you need to show an A, not, doesn't have to be on a slide, but you need to have an A in the back of your mind. Or to share that is renting space. And show that, you know, then that offsets the five eight, five oh with a move out, renting space in two years somewhere, then moving back and see what the delta is on that.
You're saying to show that to understand.
Just to understand, I think that, that needs to be out there, it might not have to be one of these plans.
Yeah.
But if, if, if the, if the seat takes place, there is a chance that, that, you know, you look at that option. But I think after you weigh that out of renting space, fitting the space the way you need it and.
Well, we looked at that, we looked at that in the fall, Jay, it could sub to three quarters of a million bucks. And the challenge is, so that's, that's two moves, it's renting space, it's, it's, it's remote.
Yeah, exactly, we just need to have.
It's part of our Lynch discuss. So I, you, you know, remote.
One way that we, 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 we're waiting for information on option C, so, I mean, those are all considerations for an option.
Why?
But I'm just, I think you're saying, we would like to look into option C more.
But rental space is not in A, so it's not in C, that's what I'm saying.
Well, Jason, yeah.
I'm just saying you need to have that number ready.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No doubt about it all.
Yeah, because C is central office not being here and all of Lynch offsite. That's C, whether it's carriage house, A, or whether it's whatever else.
Right.
Because this question is gonna get asked, right? I, yeah.
That will get us, having that answer will get the decision made a lot quicker, having that answer out there.
Right.
Knowing what that is.
Under, I, yeah, I understand, good point. All right, okay. So like a motion to adjourn?
I'd love it.
Or actually, I'm sorry, March 22nd. April 12th and April 26th.
Think of those, those dates. Do we need to revisit, do we need to come back? So the 22nd is Tuesday.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna have any options to see by Tuesday.
No.
And the 11th is the day before our next meeting. And it sounded like there was some time that we have to develop.
We may need to schedule another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so those are the next two meetings and then probably another one to be scheduled.
Well, and remember to, so Frank is a member of both, you know, I mean, seriously, you're not a member of the school committee, but you're here. So Frank is the superintendent, he's running the district, he's here at the table and he's a member of the EFPBC. So whether it's Frank sending information, Jay can send out stuff by memo, you know, to the school committee. There are multiple ways we can share information without having a meeting. So we just need to be mindful of that as well and, and probably should be doing that so that by the time there's a need for a meeting, we've shared information.
Yeah, that would be good, but I didn't know there's an action that, that the EFPBC needed from us to show, you know, support for C or someone wants to, let's see, yes.
And I think it was important for Jay to explain tonight, the understanding is that, that 5.85 cost of A, because it doesn't get rolled into the PFA. That the cost would necessarily have to be offset either by renting or by surplus.
Right.
But, and, and that that's, we think that that's reasonable given the square footage of the building and market rates. Charlie, I can't, the one thing I would ask of you, if we can do, do you have like, you didn't convert to vector files, did you? With the construction documents here, you just got old blueprints or something? I mean, it'd be really great to really know what the gross square footage is.
Uh, we did a takeoff and.
Okay.
Sorted the M and C.
Okay.
And both of our takeoffs were similar.
Yeah, we're just talking about next step, so I, I think that would be good if we can confirm gross square footage.
All right, so our square footage and the M and C's square footage are recent.
Very similar, interesting.
Okay, there's, that's one other piece of information for when the, this gets pulled together. On this renting versus surplus option, because obviously no one wants to surplus, I mean, I, I don't want a surplus to build it. But I get that it's a safety net. We have, you know, we're gonna do whatever kind of financing it is you need to do on this, the roughly six million dollars. We need to run the building without income for the two years that we build the project. We're paying some sort of debt, so it's like a, it's only kind of thing. It seems that we can burn through about four million dollars, if we think the building's worth ten, the property's worth ten million dollars. And still recoup all of our money without ten million dollar sale at the end. I'm wondering how much runway we have for the rental to start to appear, you know? Do we have to be renting on day one when we move out of here or really do we have two or three years? And I'm just saying that you might be able to model that.
That, that would happen, I don't know who would love that.
Well, I think we, one of the things we could, Frank, we should get back to Sheila and just ask the question. If we did a van as a bridge.
What's the payment?
Because depending upon what that number is, we could have a conversation about who should really shoulder that.
Yep.
And that might be a school committee conversation, because as we all know, we've had some unique one-time expenses this past year. And maybe that's a time to be sharing that as well.
But the comment about running the buildings, we will not be running the Lynch at the same time. So the operating costs of while the kids are here will be offset from not running the Lynch.
That's a good point.
You know, oil, gas, whatever it is, custodians, all those operating costs, maybe a little bit more here because it's all the building.
Oh, yeah, that's a great.
There will be no cost during the occupation, but there will be costs when they move out and it is vacant, trying to sell. But the whole, the whole year, the whole time they're here, the building can be market booked.
But it's a great, it's a great operational observation because it basically means for two years, we're gonna have six elementarys.
Yeah, because, because if you're, you're running two full maintenance and custodial and heat and all sorts of stuff, so, so that would be a useful, you know, just, I'm just trying to get the total, the total picture of.
But in C, we're not, C, we're over here, which is offline.
Right, so, so just when you, when you look at these numbers and you're trying to say, oh, you know, the project was quicker, we could save a million there, we're not running an entire school facility. How much, like just quantifying these things helps, you know, narrow the gap and, and it makes it easier. That's great.
That's a good point. It's a great point.
All right, I'm gonna adjourn.
Second?